Thank you. All right, thanks all, thanks for you, thanks for you all coming here. For the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal. Tonight's Wednesday, November 13, 2024. It is 6:30 PM and we are at room 520 of the multi-service center for 8th Marine Road, Wareham, Mass. Also, we have Zoom, people on Zoom. I want to call the meeting to order. I make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Christopher Conti, Mr. Richard Semple, my far right, Mr. Troy Larson, our clerk, Jim Akabachi, to my right, and myself, the Chair, Nazir Akalasi. I'm gonna do some preliminary business for the minutes for 10:23, 24.
I have reviewed the minutes, find them acceptable as presented and therefore move to approve as presented.
Mr. Chair, through the Chair, I just would like to say that I would like two things changed where the discussion of Woodland Cove, where I asked about to clarify if the fire department, drive in, drive out, I want it drive in, back out. That was my concern.
Which one is it? What page?
It's under, it must be the Woodland Cove one. I think it was maybe the second one or the third one down.
Go to partners. Fire access routes had been changed.
It's, it's, it's a separate one at the bottom, I believe.
Well, I've sent the confirm the fire department was fine with the drive, the drive in, out, but you want to add the word back out. Drive in and you want to add the word back.
Yes, please.
I get, I did it and I'm gonna initial it so that we don't.
I don't know if you want to correct the simple and make it simple.
Can she do that? It's okay?
S E M P L E.
There's a next one down, I believe, one of them in there, but I guess it doesn't matter. That's just nitpicking, but as long as it's the back out is all I want to clarify.
Further on in, on the same matter?
Yeah. I don't have it in front of me, but it was down a little bit. I think it was. It's down towards the bottom, I believe.
I get Semple abstained.
Right in the, it's in the beginning of the paragraph, but it doesn't matter. I'm good with it.
No, I don't.
I've been called a lot worse.
I've been called simple all my life, but they were right. It was, was it on this?
Go to the third, is there a third page?
So it might not have been in regard to the Woodland Cove.
No, no, there was a separate one after.
Oh, okay. I can't find it.
I'll find, I'll point it out later. We can do it after.
I just want to hand change it so that.
So what do you guys want to do? Table it?
We're gonna, no, we're gonna approve. I'm motioning to approve.
With the changes.
I'm making the changes and initial on them.
All right.
As, as, as edited.
All right.
That's good.
We have, it's been modified by Rich. Do I have a second on that? Have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Just for the record, also President Commissioner Paul Turner and Assistant Planning Department, Ms. Sonia Raposo. All right, we'll move to 30-20 Penrose LLC for Littleton Drive. Anybody here from Penrose? Penrose, anybody here?
I am all online.
I found it, Rich. Way back on the last page. There's a lot of reading to do today. I couldn't remember whereabouts it was.
Hi, Mr. Chair and Board. My name's Rio Seketti. I'm a senior developer with Penrose. Thank you for hearing me tonight. If you recall, I was before the board a month ago, I think two meetings ago, and for discussion on a surety requirement. And also, I made some requests at the time to begin occupancy of the, of the, of certain buildings that had final building sign off except for some remaining documentation. And I believe at the time, the board decided that no surety was needed, but they was, the board needed some final close-up materials, including the third-party inspecting agent in Green Seal Engineering. And that report was delivered to Ken Buckland two weeks ago. The final survey, which we received and delivered last week. And the board also wanted to make sure there was security fencing put up between any buildings which might, which may begin occupancy and, and the buildings which haven't received final building sign off yet. So we've done all those, we've met all those conditions. So we're requesting, under the comp permit, approval to begin occupancy, of course. That would be pending approval of the building official as well. Which I know can't be granted here tonight. That's a separate approval, separate process.
Okay. Where, do we have the report and where? I, I saw the as well, and the report, I didn't see, is the report here?
I think I saw Phil come in.
And how about the bond? Did you guys post a bond to finish?
No, that, that was one of the discussions from the last hearing. We have less than, at this point, less than $200,000 worth of work left. It's just punch list items. And including some replacement of landscaping, which won't be able to be done until the spring because of the weather.
All right, so you want from us the go-ahead, so the building commissioners don't do the inspection, right?
That's right.
I, I saw the as well. I drove by myself. I like the, and the, and the as well, I like. So I go to the board member. Troy, what do you think?
I, I don't have any problem.
Jimmy?
I've been by, I don't find any issues.
Chris?
I'm all set.
Richard?
I'm good.
Okay, anyone here want to speak on this matter? That being said, so I guess have no problem release it to the commissioner so, and the department, let's all start doing inspection, if you guys okay with it.
We are, does this require a vote or do we just?
Yeah, we need to vote.
So we need to move to, what are we doing? We're, we're waiving any additional surety?
No.
We're not waiving any additional surety? Sorry.
There's only like a couple hundred thousand to lift, to finish, and this is a project over 35 million. And they did a good job so far. I drove, they did wonderful job, so I don't think we should require that.
That's what I'm saying, we're waiving any additional.
Right, sure, right. We waive any additional surety. So I'd like a motion to release it to the building department.
So moved.
So I have a motion by Jim to release the project to the building department. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Thank you, sir. Six Chapel Lane, 5-23, Six Chapel Lane LLC. Comprehensive permit. Name for the racket, please.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Steven Bushman, 19 Depot Street, developer.
Okay, all right, so we'll bring you guys here tonight.
Yeah, Lynn may be on Zoom.
Who?
Lynn Sweet may be on Zoom, I don't know. What we're looking for is a determination that what we're showing with this revised plan is a minor revision. All we're doing with this plan is correcting the property line perimeter. There's no change to the layout, no change to buildings, utilities, grading, anything whatsoever. This green area was originally misidentified as part of the parcel. So we, it's, it's not. We've removed that from the site and that's the only modification to the plan. It's a total 1,690 square feet. So it's just a property line correction and there's no change to anything else whatsoever.
So originally, that was in the plan?
It was part of the property shown. There was nothing occurring on that land. It was just additional land.
So the property line was actually?
Yeah, it went around that odd shape, but it's been corrected.
And who owns that existing dwelling, number 13, Lot 1038?
Steve.
Lot 43. The piece where that was?
Ruiz, family. Steve Ruiz.
Where is Steve? Who's Steve?
Steve is the neighbor of the property.
He's an abbot.
He's the abbot.
And so is the deed confirmed, the language in the deed confirms that?
Yes.
I mean, so you, so your deed originally said that's what it looks like? And for some reason, you guys draw it the other way?
I don't know how it got included originally. We've been working on this corner for a number of years. We, we did work on this duplex originally. The assessor's office had this as part of the parcel, but it was, it came to our attention through the bank that this didn't appear to be part of it. So we did a thorough deed research and we concur with them. So we've corrected the perimeter and as I said, it doesn't affect.
So. So your neighbor owns that piece, but you didn't know?
Actually, he knew it because I chit-chatted with him and he said when he closed on his property, he ended up with two deeds.
Ah, okay. And when you went through the bank, they picked up on it?
That's when the bank picked up on it, yes, sir.
So it doesn't change any of the layout, so we're looking for determination that it's a minor revision.
Okay. It's a 40B, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, okay.
All right, anyone in the audience, on the public, want to speak favor against this matter? Any board questions on this matter? Chris, Richard, Troy, Jim?
Nope.
That being said, if you guys okay with the modification, can I get a motion?
I move that we accept it and treat it as a minor modification and approve it as presented in the, in the plan. Is there, is this a whole new plan?
Yes, it has a new date.
Revised 10/29/24, right?
Correct.
That's what I wanted.
All right. Okay, so motion to approve as per revised plan drafted by GF, GAF Engineering on 10/29/24. And that's correcting property line. That sounds right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, that's motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. It carries. Next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
36-20, are we?
I sent him an email yesterday.
Sorry, Chris, thank you.
All right, continue public hearing, 36-24 Indian Neck Property, LLC, 50 Indian Neck Road. All right.
Is that gonna be by Zoom or?
They're here.
Okay.
All right, public hearing still open. Name and address, sir?
John, John Hines, property owner.
Ma'am?
Ally Anderson, Chief Clinical Officer.
Bill Madden, GF Engineering.
Okay, Mrs., what's her last name?
Anderson.
Anderson, Jimmy, can you swear and the other ones, they're still in effect. You're gonna testify on technical stuff?
Sure.
All right, you wanna stand up, please?
Sure.
You'll stand up too. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
All right, very well, have a seat. All right, where were we, Mr. Madden? Or where are we? Yes, ma'am.
He's waving.
Yes, he's Mr. Bobowski's partner.
Mister, okay, attorney?
Attorney Bobowski.
Attorney what?
Attorney Bobowski cannot be here today.
All right, attorney who? Who's replacing him?
Silverstein is taking the place?
Correct, yes.
And what is he?
He's on Zoom.
I was just confirming, he was with them so I could let them in.
Oh, okay, very well. All right, who's wanna speak? Who is attorney, Mr. Madden, who wants to speak?
Hello? Mr. Chair, I'll lead it off if I might. As indicated, I'm Jonathan Silverstein, I'm the applicant's counsel for this evening and my partner is unavailable. As I understand it, Mr. Chair, the board has previously approved zoning relief necessary for the use and the only remaining issue or relief to be voted on is sightline approval. And my understanding is that the last remaining issue for sightline approval was resolution of the question of what type of fencing would be erected on the site. There's been a number of conversations with the abutters' council and I don't know if Ms. Morton is present, so I won't speak for her, but my understanding is that the abutters feel strongly that it is improper and unnecessary to have a perimeter fence around the entire site with a 10-foot swath cleared of the existing vegetation, that that would be, in their view, a unnecessary and improper impact on their properties. So they have provided a fencing proposal, which I believe has been provided to the board, which would involve a black chain link fence around the entire facility, but not along the perimeter, and that it would not have the proposed 10-foot lane along the fence. So from the applicant's standpoint, we don't think any fencing is necessary. The nursing home obviously didn't have one. There's no reason for our facility to have one, but we're willing to provide fencing as long as it doesn't result in a zoning appeal. And we've been advised in no uncertain terms that there would be an appeal if a perimeter fence were required as part of the project. And so we're a little bit between a rock and a hard place, but since we don't think any fencing is required, we're asking the board to agree to the fencing option that is preferred by the neighbors so that we can all avoid getting embroiled in three-way litigation.
All right, very well. Mr. Madden, on the plan, I, just for the record, I met with Mr. Madden, Mr. Madden a couple of weeks ago, went over the plan. I like what he did with the plan and how he revised it. It really reflect the wishes of the board, as we discussed last time, regarding the fencing with the brick and how he set the back, how he sets it back 40 feet from number 12. I think it's very advocate, advocate for the neighbors. I think it's safe and it came out very good. I want to start by the board questions, then we'll get back to you. Troy, what do you think?
My question is, is it the whole perimeter fence that they're talking about or just the fence in the back, the chain link fence?
Counselor?
Just the fence in the back.
Okay.
You're not the counselor, right?
Sorry, no.
He's saying, the counselor is saying the whole, the whole fence. He's saying the whole, but there's two stories here. He's saying the fence in the back. He's saying no fence at all. So one of you gotta answer the questions. One of you gonna have the right answer, either you or the counselor. Which one would you like to speak?
I'm not, Mr. Chair, I'll answer, Jonathan Silverstein for the record. I'm not saying that we're not providing a fence. I'm just saying we don't think a fence would be necessary, but we're willing to provide it as long as it's one that doesn't cause the neighbors to appeal. So obviously, I'm on Zoom. I don't know if a member of the team has the illustration that was provided to us by the neighbors' council that basically shows black chain link fence on the side and the back. It's just that it's not all the way around. It's not along the property line. It's, it's set in from the property line so that it's not as disruptive to the neighbors, but it's around all of the arcing and other cleared areas of the facility. And then in the front, it would be that stone wall with the black iron fencing on top. And I would defer to Mr. Madden to clarify.
That answer your question?
Yeah, so apparently the, the people on number 12, I guess it is, have an issue with the fence. We wanted the 10-foot buffer and they only want a 3-foot?
No, we gave them 40. They wanted, like a wood fence. We want chain link with inserts.
Yeah.
Black chain, chain link fence with inserts so you can see through. They want wood stockade or wood fence, whatever you call, cedar, whatever. Answer your question, Troy?
Yep.
Jimmy?
No questions.
Richard?
I just, through this whole process, I just want to say that as a board, we try to look out for the neighborhood and, and safe, public safety and whatnot, and this was a difficult one as it went because this is a, I'm not used to having the neighbors not come in. They were represented by council. We didn't get to hear much from them. So in a way, when I read the letter today, it seemed like we were trying to do something above and beyond, but basically we were just trying to do a good job for the, for the town and look out for the neighborhood, but apparently they're happy with it. That's fine. But I do have a question. I would like to know if Mr. Bobowski has ever been in business with our counsel, Richard Bowman, and I don't know who can answer that.
I can answer that.
Bobowski, he's not here though.
I think the person on line said.
Are you, can you answer for Mr. Bobowski?
I can. So I'll say a couple of things, just in case it comes up. I worked for 26 years at KP Law, previously Copelman and Page. During that time, for maybe the first eight or nine years, Mr. Bowen was also a partner at that firm, so I have worked with Mr. Bowen, though not for probably 15 or more years. When Mr. Bowen left, he went to join another law firm that Mr. Bobowski was also a partner of. That law firm split up, but Mr. Bowen left, you know, years before it split up and years before I joined Mr. Bobowski. So it's been many years since I or Mr. Bobowski was partners with Mr. Bowen and we have no current or recent business relationship.
Well, then I feel that my, in my personal opinion, I feel that my executive order meeting that we had was conflicted. And anything that Mr. Bowen and Mr. Bobowski have been in contact with each other through it, I feel it's also that way. That, I'm only a 12th grade education, but when I read conflict of interest, the last two sections seem to stick to this. And we, as a board, always recuse ourselves so we don't appear to be showing favors or swaying any of the vote. And I would just be, I have a hard time thinking that the people that run our town on the legit, legal side can commit it and feel fine to it and we can't. So I, that's my problem. That's the only, and the biggest problem I've had, I don't have a problem with galls now. I don't have a problem with the neighbors, but I have had a problem with this since we had our executive meeting. So that's all I got to say about that.
Mr. Chair, can I speak to that just quickly?
Sure.
It's not my place to defend an allegation against Mr. Bowen. He's very capable of doing that himself. But the municipal law bar in Massachusetts is not very large. And if every law firm that shared any current or previous staff or attorneys with another law firm was deemed to have a conflict, then municipalities would have a really hard time finding competent counsel. Under the conflict of interest law, a conflict is defined as having a financial interest in the matter that you're acting on. Having previously worked with another lawyer many years prior to the current application absolutely does not create a conflict of interest for Mr. Bowen. Again, it's not my place to defend him, except that I know and respect him as a former colleague and I would hate for any misunderstanding to linger in that regard.
All right. Why don't we proceed at this moment and, and I guess that will give ammunition to the neighbors if they want to appeal it?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Bless you. Unless the board want to go another way. I don't know what other way, well, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know which way to go from here, unless it's good ammunition for the neighbors, I guess, if they want to appeal this matter. If it is good ammunition, I don't know if it is or not. I mean, counsel makes sense, Richard makes sense, but that's not for me to call, so.
Well, I think, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
I think Mr. Semple has made his concern known. It's been stated, it's on the record. It'll be in the minutes going forward if a decision is made and any party is aggrieved by it. At that time, if they feel as though this had an impact, it can be addressed at that time. If in the interim, there's a decision made and there's no aggrieved party, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I agree. All right, I guess, what do you think, Chris?
I'd like to get back to the fence, actually.
Well, that's one thing at a time. Do you agree with Jimmy's?
I agree with Jimmy's.
Richard, apparently you don't, right? Troy, do you agree with Jim's statement?
I understand Rich's concern, but I agree with Jim.
All right, so that's.
So we're not dismissing?
No, we're not dismissing his comment, of course, I go on the record.
I think it's important that it's read into the record and.
All right, I guess the majority says they agree with Jim, will continue. It is, it's gonna be on record, so. All right, let's go back to the fence. What do you want to say?
So on these revised plans, revision three, I think it was, I thought the fence, everything looked good. And I'm wondering if, is that what the neighbors want, what's on these plans, exactly what's on these plans?
These are the plans what we want. They want, like, they sent a picture. Who sent an email? Sonia sent an email today.
I saw the picture.
They want the wood fence.
They want the wood fence where the chain link fence is, not where, or they want that all around the property.
They want that all the way around.
If I may?
Yes. Do you want to come forward, maybe you could explain about? Might as well, you're gonna speak, right?
Attorney Jillian Morton, 184 Main Street. So in the email that was sent out, we came to a resolution regards to the design of the fence. So you should have saw the pictures. This was the one, I believe, Mr. Madden put it on as a visual on the latest plan. Is that correct?
It's similar to that, yes.
Similar to that, okay. So that is what we've, so we're not talking about the wood fence anymore. So it was really the placement of the fence.
Oh, so they like that one?
Yes.
Ah, okay, so we're good.
He read the letter.
The neighbors would prefer.
I have a million letters, I don't read, if I, I don't have time to read letters.
The neighbors would prefer the bottom one where the slats go sideways as opposed to up and down. It gives them more privacy, but it would have the stone on the bottom.
Number for, or anything, so we could refer it. Is there a number on that or?
I think that, Mr. Madden, did you fix it on the plan or?
Yeah, no, our, indicates a fence with the horizontal type of architectural feature on it that.
That's what we.
It is detailed, it is detailed on the drawing as well.
Which page is it?
Let me see what page we are.
The other piece of that. The other piece of that was just the placement of the landscaping. So the privacy trees would be behind the privacy metal screens on the.
Oh, that.
Shorter in the front aesthetically, that looks better.
Page five.
Oh, that, please, but detail of the plan.
No, that's just changed. It's on the upper left-hand corner of sheet number five, if you happen to have that with you.
Yeah.
You want the plan?
I got it right here.
Okay, I got the hard copy here if you need it.
Oh, okay. On the top left corner, right?
Bill, what's the date of that plan?
It's November 6th. It's revised through November 6th, but there's the detail, shows the stone, a little bit of the columns and the horizontal nature of the screening on the metal fence.
Okay, very well. All right, so that, I'm glad it's settled, so that's good. It's revised 11/6. Correct. Questions? Are you okay?
I'm good.
I'm good. I reviewed the plans. I thought it was exactly what they wanted.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Jimmy? All right, on the public, who's, anyone want to speak in favor of this matter or against or comments? Anything on this matter? All right, counselor would like, before we close, do you want to do any closing comments? Counselor?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate your consideration and we think the matter is ready for a vote.
Attorney Morton, you need to say anything before we close? You're good?
I just want to say that I appreciate how this process went. I think that a lot of times, neighbors, if, you know, if you're represented, we can work together to find a resolution, and they really did that, so I do appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, that being said, let's move to close, Jim.
Make a motion to close the public input on this matter.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Jim Akabachi on 5-23, excuse me, on 36-24 Indian Neck Property LLC, 50 Indian Neck Road, for a site plan review. Do I have a second on that?
A second.
Second by Chris, all in favor to close, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
Abstain, myself, Nazi, yes, it closed. So 4-0-1, closed. Wishes on a site plan review. Now, the site plan, simple majority, so only three out of five, so only need three votes.
We just finished straight in abstained because it's a big word for me to write.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the site plan, that counsel for the applicant prepare the final decision for our review, that it be reviewed by our counsel prior to signature.
Correct.
And we vote in favor of the plans as amended and updated on November 5th?
6th.
November 6th, 2024.
Okay, I have a motion to grant by Jim. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye. Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Abstain.
Abstain. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, yes. So it's a 4-0-1, it carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. 21-23 Angela McEwen, 386.
Yes.
Attached to the minutes, we have a request for an extension. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right there, sorry.
This extension would be for the first week in January. The reason, and I did speak to Attorney Silverstein, actually. I reached out to the Butters Council so that people wouldn't waste their time. My client's out of the country. Next month, I'll be out of the country, so we're looking for a January date.
All right.
And so I think.
Have you worked out, bless you, have you worked out the easement you and our counsel?
We are working on it.
There's no sense going through this unless you guys agree.
Well, I'm just asking for the continuance so we can discuss it.
All right. What I'm saying, I don't want to get here in January and you don't have an answer to that.
You can continue again.
All right, that's fine. January what? 8 or 22nd?
The 8.
Attached to your agenda.
She's looking to, and she's also including the extension on the deadline until February 12th, and she's looking to go January 15th.
Yeah, the 15th.
Oh, January 15th.
It's either the 8th or the 22nd.
So that, I'm gonna edit your letter to January 22nd.
Can I, okay, I need to look at my calendar.
You need to look at your calendar. Look at your calendar.
Okay. Can't do the 15th.
Okay, there's no 15.
Or, sorry, the 8th or the 22nd. Okay, I can do the 8th.
The 8th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just get a motion to continue.
So we're continuing until January 8th, and we're extending the deadline for the board to make a decision out to February 12th, 2025.
Okay, this motion by Jimmy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, aye, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the police chief outside?
Yep.
He was gonna speak on the.
Indian?
Gossnall? It wasn't necessary, so he kept quiet.
Is he okay? Is he waiting for something? You want to check if he wants to answer? We don't make him wait?
We already closed him.
He left?
I don't know.
Okay.
He didn't, you know, he wasn't.
I guess the security, he was also here, had asked him to come to speak on.
Ah, okay.
In case we get into a.
I just want to make sure he's not here to arrest.
I didn't want to arm wrestle with him anyway.
All right. 43-24, Rosbun, Rothbun, James Rothbun, 36 Date Wood Street. All right.
Isn't it ongoing? This is.
Is that a continued?
Yes, it's continued, has been continued multiple times. This was the.
Yeah.
Beach. What do we got here? I'm giving you the stuff on outside of the packet, because usually that's the new stuff that we want to see. Another one of these for them.
Troy?
Troy.
One for me and you.
You and I can share that one.
All right, your name, sir?
James Rothbun, 35 Date Wood Street.
Okay, public hearing's still open, so I guess we gave you a homework to do. Did you do it?
Yes, I did. I have pitches, and I believe the inspector was out there today.
All right, Commissioner, run down.
The building is down. Inspector Stewart took a look at that. There is a plumbing permit that was taken out but not inspected for the disconnect, and there was no electrical permit taken out for the disconnect, for the demolition. I believe that's something I can work out with the applicant afterwards.
Okay. All right, very well. Where'd we leave it last time? If you take this, we'll give you a permit to go forward. So he took everything down, he's gonna start from scratch.
Correct.
All right, questions, Chris?
No questions.
No questions.
Jimmy?
Based on what's happened, what does the applicant need now? A variance for setback, if I recall? I'm going by memory. What do we need?
Special permit.
Special permit to?
Side setback.
Side setback.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a special permit, not a variance?
Correct.
Because it's an existing nonconforming?
That's correct.
If we, if we feel it's not such detrimental, we go side, side.
Well, did we, did we previously vote that it was a special permit?
No, we can't, no.
Okay, I'm just making sure.
What's that, 1355?
The number, yeah.
Or 53?
No, I'm good with it. I don't care if it's a special or a variance. I just want to, I was just making sure.
Just gonna make sure in case somebody appeals.
Yeah, what are we discussing? We're discussing side setback and it, and it's preexisting.
Nonconforming.
Nonconforming.
Right. So he took, well, he built illegally. He took it down, he's gonna rebuild it, right?
Correct.
With the foundation and the inspections and all that. Very well. Troy?
I have no questions.
Anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? I hear none, anyone on Zoom? Okay. All right. You want to say anything before we close?
No, I don't have.
No? All right.
So you're ready to close the?
Yeah, why not?
We don't need any additional input, so I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye. Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Wishes.
So it appears that an air of cooperation has developed, and the building commissioner and inspector are now able to work with this applicant, and all we really need to do is vote in favor of the special permit to continue the preexisting nonconforming setback.
Good.
Is that correct?
Close enough.
So moved.
So we have a motion by Jim, being not so detrimental to the neighborhood, we will act upon it as a special permit and to grant based on the plan signed by Daniel LaFournier and dated on 9/12/2024.
Second.
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it carries. Thank you. Have a good night. Public hearings, 53-24 Diane and Frederick Gray, 3134 Cranberry Highway. Just gotta give us a minute to get things ready.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number 53-24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Diane A. and Frederick Gray of 14 West Street, Plimpton, Mass., proposing to construct two wooden arbors, eight feet wide by 48 feet long, located at 3134 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. This would appear on Wareham Assessors map 8 lot 1010 in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, would like your name and address for the record?
Diane Mizili Gray.
Okay, sir.
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering.
Thank you.
And Frederick Gray, 14 West Street, Plimpton.
Okay, want to tell us what you're trying to do? What's your plan? What are you building?
Yeah, I could start first, Chairman. Diane and Rick currently own Mizili's Farm Stand in Delhi.
Yeah.
They currently have some outside display, some arbors that are in disrepair, and they would like to replace them.
Are they all, do you want to just replace them?
Well, one blew, one blew over in the storm, and yeah, we'd like to.
And they're so close to the property line?
Yeah.
They needed a variance.
I guess that's why.
You guys know Mizili's.
Were they, were they put in there originally under a variance?
No, they, they were above ground before.
They were above ground, temporary type things. They were there, and we've been there for 45 years.
You're gonna make it permanent.
I'm sorry?
You're gonna put them in the ground?
Yeah, this time we're gonna try and keep them from blowing over.
Going to take a bigger wind this time?
Hopefully, you know, that area has known for some windstorms. We've had a couple of buildings blow down in the past 20 years.
If I can keep asking. This is, this is Mizili's, this is next to Ella's Restaurant?
Correct, yeah.
And then on the other side of you, there's a mobile home park?
Correct.
And, okay. So right now it's closed?
Yeah, we're doing some work, interior work, new flooring and so forth that we can do well. Can't be open.
I'm good.
Too much room.
All right, anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? Favor or against? None. What questions? Troy?
I have no questions.
Jim?
Is this picture recent? Is this this morning? I missed this.
Yeah, I was shoveling all morning.
You were shoveling? Okay, all right. I missed it. I knew it was cold out this morning.
I'm good. Nope, I'm good.
I have no problems with this, no? Okay, that being said, do you want to say anything before we close?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, Jimmy?
Make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
I have a motion to close by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, aye. Wishes on the variance?
I'd say we grant as requested, but subject to the commissioner's approval of the structure. You're gonna need a building permit, right?
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
And he's gonna, okay.
Subject to the building code. I mean, we give.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, yeah.
Okay.
I've got my towards twisted.
All right, very well. Any discussion on the variance? None? So I have a second on that variance?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Bless you. Christopher?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye, it carries. You're good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We got everything back in and in the folder?
54-24 US Enterprises, special site plan review for 2888 Cranberry Highway.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November 13th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition number fifty-four dash twenty-four for a change of use, special permit and site plan review from the requirements of Article Three, Table three twenty, Article Nine, Table nine twenty, and Article Fifteen, Section fifteen twenty, to USF Enterprises LLC, care of Robert Rego P E, L S P of Riverhawk Environmental of five one one West Grove Street, Middleborough, Mass., proposing changing the use from motor vehicle sales to motor vehicle service at the property located at twenty-eight eighty-eight Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. This would appear on Wareham assessor's map one twenty-nine lot one one three four in the commercial strip zoning district.
Okay, very well, name and address, sir?
Uh, for the record, my name's Barb Rego, I'm with Riverhawk Environmental, and I live at three twenty-six Glen Charlie Road in Wareham.
Okay, and I'm assuming you applying for a, for a warrant pay of service?
Yes, correct.
How many cars you wanna keep for dealer license? You cannot, I know you had like twenty-five licenses, you wanna keep like three or four?
Yes, please.
Because you gotta include it in the same decision, or you lose it.
Okay, yes, we would like to keep as many as possible, but four would be great.
Or five?
Five, five would be better, yes.
Okay, uh, is this your first time in Wareham, applying for a project?
Well, I'm, I'm the engineer representing the applicant, but, um, yes, in front of the zoning board of appeals, but many times in front of other boards.
Okay, did you open a fifty-three G account? Fifty-three G account, did you open fifty-three G account?
I don't believe we did, no.
Okay, I mean, I'm gonna make it easy for you, so we go smooth.
Yep.
Need to open a fifty-three G account to Sonia, she'll give you the rundown. Our consultant, Phil, that you had changed review? Uh, you see, that's the problem, our consultant would not review unless she opens the fifty-three.
I didn't start that process until it came before you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, it's a very simple, it's, it's really a change in use and some striping on the parking lot, there's no changes to pavement, there's no changes to vegetation, there's no change to traffic count, it's very simple, so I didn't know that maybe it wouldn't be subject to review, or we could ask for a waiver from that review, because it is such a simple project.
Unfortunately, I would like to do this, but we have a standard that we give, do it to everybody, even with small little change, we make them do this. So it would be a real, really biased if we don't, and I understand, I really look at the project, I'm fine with it, and, and I totally understand what you're saying, but we do this to everyone, we cannot, like, make an exception.
They are going from sales to repair, correct?
That is correct.
Repair and sales, but you could give us quick rundown, what are you doing?
Sure, sure, so the, the basic idea is, I'll, um, it's an existing site on the northerly side of Cranberry Highway, um, it was formerly, um, years back, a car wash, it was, the building's been used for automobile sales, um, since it was, you know, changed from a car wash. They're looking to close in that building and do auto repairs, um, that, so they can free up space on the other side, they currently own both sides of Cranberry Highway, the gas station across the side, and they want to move their, their repair operations across the street. So we're not changing any parking lot, we have been in front of the conservation commission, received their approval, or received a, a negative determination from them that we don't have to file. So it's just closing the building, changing the use from, from sales to repair.
Okay, besides the site plan review, I just wanna pass it by the board, see if they're okay with the idea, or they have comments. Troy?
I'm okay with it.
Jimmy?
I'll be fine.
Christopher?
I'm fine.
Richard?
Also.
Okay, and I'll be fine myself, so it's a matter of technicality and, like, numbers and stuff, so.
Sure.
Uh, so I recommend you open a fifty-three G account tomorrow.
Okay.
Get, this is our consultant, Mr. Cudero, behind you.
Okay.
Take his number and make it fast and quick.
Get it directly to him.
Give you the rundown, what to do, this way you don't go back and forth many times.
Perfect.
And you come back next time with what we want, and be the end of it.
Okay, thank you very much.
So what, when's the next time you're gonna come? Can you make the December meeting?
Yes, I'm on for another project, so that would be fantastic if we made the December.
We got a stacked meeting December eleventh, we got eight or nine things already.
You have eleven, maybe public hearing in December.
We had fourteen before, we did fine.
We'll do it. Okay, December eleventh it is.
Okay, so I can motion to continue this till December eleven.
So moved.
So moved by Rich, do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Sorry, confused. Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Christopher?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So December?
Thank you.
Eleven twenty-four five zero. Okay, so December eleven twenty-four.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Just on your way out, get, get Mr. Cudero's number, so, and you said you wanna include five car sales, too, just put on those things.
Yes, please, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any reason to limit them to five, or?
He said five.
Okay.
If he wants more, he could ask more.
Okay.
In December eleven.
Parking would eliminate.
Parking.
He's gotta have the parking for it.
Okay, to do the, because they gotta have so many spaces for them, they got four bays there now.
He's twenty-one spots and then plus the five.
Twenty spots just for the, yeah, okay. There, there is a reason.
There is, so.
How many parking there?
It requires twenty-one, so then if he wants five, so he's gotta show a plan with twenty-six spots.
Ah, okay, that's why he needs to deal with Phil.
Mm-hmm.
Or he could have one car license. All right, very well, uh, we continue with fifty-five dash twenty-four, Lauren Enos and Brett McGee, eighty Glen Charlie Road. All right, just give us a minute.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six thirty P M in room five twenty of the Wareham multi-service center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. zero two five seven one, to consider petition number fifty-five dash twenty-four for a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table six twenty-five, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Lauren Enos and Brett McGee, McGee, sorry.
I had it right the first time, actually, I was very impressed.
Of eighty Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass., proposing to construct a sixteen-foot by twenty-two-foot two-car garage in the front of the principal dwelling located at eighty Glen Charlie Road, East Wareham, Mass. This would appear on assessor's map one twenty-nine lot B dash one, I'm sorry, assessor's map one twenty-nine slash B slash one lot thirty-seven in the R one thirty zoning district.
All right, very well, name and address?
Brett McGee, eighty Glen Charlie Road.
Lauren Enos, eighty Glen Charlie Road.
Okay, so explain to us what you're trying to do?
So we're honestly just trying to make some room in the house, you know, we live in a seven hundred square foot cottage and looking to grow a family and just not looking to move to another house. Just trying to make up a little room, get some stuff out in the garage and have a family.
Okay, so you wanna build the garage?
Correct.
And?
I think the big.
Why the garage has to be in front of the house, not in the back?
I just like that area a lot better, then you have the septic with the leaching field right there, and to the side yard as well.
Where's your leaching field?
Leaching field would be right by the shed that you see on the plan, somewhere behind there, along with the septic that runs that fence line.
I, I don't, I don't see it here. I don't see the leaching field in the front.
They might not have drew all that even in there.
What's that?
It's not, I don't believe it's drawn on there, the leaching field.
So the engineer landmark site design, they should have included that.
He might not have, because it was so far away.
What's that?
Maybe he didn't include that, because it was away from the leaching field where we wanna put the garage?
No, it, you have to locate it, so we know, we need to know what's your hardship for putting that garage in the front, that's way too much in the front. The garage supposed to be behind the house.
All right.
All right, not only that, on the R one thirty zone, there's a setback, which we totally understand, because the bylaw was written wrong. How big is your lot?
Nine thousand square feet.
Hundred by ninety.
I guess, what's the setback on those?
Be twenty in the front and ten and ten.
Then, then, so.
We should have the twenty in the front, we should, that's how I mapped it all out.
Right, well, showing, showing ten in the front, I think. Showing ten, but you need, you need to have a hardship why you want the garage in the front, so we really need to see where the septic is. If your septic interfere with the garage being in the back, then this is your hardship, but if it's not, I don't see a reason, you got plenty of room in the back, you don't have a wetland issue. I don't understand why wouldn't.
Might have to move the shed, but.
We would have no yard.
Yeah, I'd love to keep the yard and everything.
We would have no yard available.
Grow some grass for the kids and everything. If we put a, if we put a garage in the middle of the yard, then we kinda lose everything. It's not like we were saying, it's not a huge lot at all.
We use our second bedroom for storage right now, and our washer and dryer and water heaters in the second bedroom as well.
Just a crawl space underneath.
So we have very minimal.
So you don't just garage for like storage and stuff?
Right.
Fixing vehicles and.
They're calling it a two-car garage, but sixteen by twenty-two.
I don't, it's only got.
Had to get two cars.
It's only a single garage door.
You'll get your time to speak.
It's hardly a two-car garage. Yeah, I'm just a.
Then, well, maybe you have, they have compact.
I think, I think, um, I think the bylaws say that the front of the garage isn't supposed to be closer to the street than the front of the house.
Right, that's why they need a variance.
And if they, if they, but they've got it.
Well, a detailed structure, it cannot be in front of the house, correct, Commissioner? Before we go forward, let's see, Troy, what do you think?
I have no, no comments right yet.
Chris?
I don't have any comments, I'd just like to hear if any neighbors are anything against it.
Richard?
Nope, I'm kinda understanding, I know over on that neck of the woods there, and it's pretty tight, so I can understand how they would like to have it in the front and let the kids play out of, off of the way from, away from the road. But again, you gotta present your hardship, so.
Jimmy?
So, I'm looking at this, you're planning on coming in to your property from Glen Charlie Road, and then you have to turn left if you wanted to drive into your garage, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then actually, it's a horseshoe driveway, so there's technically two driveways, so we can.
And, and I see on the plan here, it looks like you've got a bunch of bushes that you're planting on.
Correct.
Are they there already, or?
Correct.
They're existing?
Yep, yes, sir.
Yep. So you see what, you see the bushes, because the bushes are gonna kinda hide it.
So they're gonna kinda get some privacy.
And, and he's looking to go ten feet from the front instead of twenty, is that it?
And he has a set, side setback, you have issue there, you need ten feet, not five.
Instead of ten, yeah.
I was told five feet, so, but I can definitely push it ten.
It's ten, right?
It's ten.
Oh, yeah.
It's ten, and it's supposed to be twenty?
On the front.
On the front?
Mm-hmm. Twenty off of what, could I ask? Off the sidewalk?
The road.
So I, when I measured myself, it was twenty feet off of the sidewalk, to my.
Sidewalk, you're on our property line.
Yeah, okay, so what's?
Ten feet, twenty feet from your property, not the sidewalk.
All right.
Because the town owns.
It was five feet.
Down the sidewalk.
How far do they own from the sidewalk?
Ah, you gotta get a surveyor, I don't know, each location's separate. You have a surveyor who's standing, and he's showing ten feet.
All right.
But anyway, anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? I hear none, go ahead, what do you want to say?
I'm, I'm looking at, it, it appears that there's quite a bit of town owned between his property line. If you were going from the edge of the pavement, he'd be like thirty or forty feet from the edge of the pavement.
It'd be forty-seven feet.
Forty, is that from the center line, or is that from the edge of the pavement?
Edge of pavement, forty point three, forty feet.
Yeah, forty feet, so even if the town put another whole lane in, he'd still be thirty feet.
He still want the variance, though.
He'd still need the variance, I think I, I'm just, I'm vocali, I'm thinking, I'm vocalizing my thoughts, I think I'd, um, lean to be, um, lean towards granting him relief. Maybe move the thing over from the, what, who's on, who's on the side? Who's on you?
So if you're looking at the house, to the left is one guy's just on Stella House, and the other one's an abandoned house that we've been trying to deal with for a while.
I'd, I'd.
Nobody's over there.
You could still get in and out of your driveway, and you could still get in and out of your garage if you weren't, if you were a little further from the property line. Five, five feet gets you around the building, but you follow what I'm thinking?
You need three variances here, you need the front setback, side setback, and the garage being in the front.
Yeah.
One way or another, the septic issue gonna pop out at one point, because when you go put the foundation, whether we give you the variance or not, you have to show where the septic is, because you have to be ten feet away from that field and the holding tank. So our best bet right now, your best bet, you gotta go back and have your engineer locate the leaching, the septic exactly how it is, because regardless, when you gotta, when you go for a building permit, you need it. You can't get a building permit without locating it, all you know, you probably, you probably have the garage on top of the leaching field, you don't know.
All right.
Right? We really don't know.
From where the septic is, I'm probably forty-plus feet away with the garage, so I'd be shocked.
You talk about the holding tank, you don't know where the leaching field is.
So, I mean.
How old's the septic?
Uh, six years old, yeah.
How long?
Six years.
Okay, so whoever did it, is that the same engineer?
No, I do not believe so.
Well, it should have the town running, you should have that somewhere, bring it and have Mr. Bruce Wilson, Jr., the surveyor who did this, incorporated in this, and we need at least one copy, two by three, so we could see it properly. Then come back with us, where the, where the leaching field, where the septic, how, how the septic, leaching field, E-box, everything lays out. Then we'll go from there.
All right.
If you go to the Board of Health and say, I'd like an ass built on my septic system, they'll go to the file, they'll pull it out, they'll photocopy it, and I don't know, it depends on their mood, it might cost you seven and a half bucks.
Yeah, all right, perfect.
If, if you send your wife and she smiles, you might get it for her.
That's what I've been going for this whole time.
You did it six years ago, you should have a plan, right?
I probably do.
Six years.
No, I wasn't, yeah, that's not, we'll get it on there.
They bought the house.
I was there when they were putting the septic in and everything, so I've visualized where it is.
Regardless, you gotta bring it to this surveyor, Wilson, and have him incorporated on this plan.
That might, that might cause them to put the garage where it is, because it's.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I'm.
We need to know, bottom line, we need to know. All right, you think you could do this in a, until, in a month?
Less if, that's what it takes.
All right.
It's already been three months for this.
Board members, any question before we send them away?
Nope.
All right, so we're gonna continue this matter until December eleven. So go fix your plans, bring a two-by-three plan, at least one two-by-three plan with the septic on it, the whole nine yards, signed by the surveyor, and we'll decide from there, okay?
Awesome.
All right, can we get a motion continued until December eleven? We have, we have a motion to continue this matter until December eleven, which is eighty Glen Charlie Road, and second by, is that, Richard? All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. We'll see you on December eleven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you for all saying aye, since you seemed, I broke down the decision before you said it.
Thank you.
Fifty-six dash twenty-four, Ralph Romano, five admirals' way.
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, see, we did ten things tonight.
She don't believe in us.
She believes in us, she just, she just can never get over, she's so overwhelmed by it, because she's comparing us. I didn't say two.
I didn't wanna say nothing, but you said it. All right.
Chiney the corner, is it? Is it Chiney the corner that you're comparing us to? Nothing compares to you. You, I want both of these?
Yeah. For the chair.
For, for the chair.
I can see it was small plan, right? I could have thought of it. What was admirals' way?
Point Independence.
Where?
Point Independence.
Ah, okay.
Am I giving them the, am I giving you the wrong thing? Or is it just another Riverhawk Environmental?
No, he pulled out style.
I gave him back the wrong file. I'm giving, I'm.
Well, we were gonna be out of here early.
We were thinking it was way too smoothly. Now who you comparing me to? Now those are the right ones, but this is the wrong folder. I should have put that stuff in the wrong folder, so. Fifty-five, twenty-four. I want fifty-six, twenty-four. Oh, I gotta read it in again, too. The Bone and Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on November thirteenth, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi-Center. Yes, we, yes. And this one got all pressed on a part, and here's another one for your buddy down there. Wareham Multi-Covers, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition fifty-six dash twenty-four for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article Six, Table 628, and Article Thirteen, Section thirteen fifty-two, and Section thirteen fifty-three under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Ralph D. Romano of 294 Plymouth Street, Middleborough, Mass., proposing to remove and replace existing twenty-five foot, four inch by ten foot unfinished addition foundation. Add twenty-five foot, four inches by ten foot first floor addition. Add two separate four foot by six inch by six foot additions on the second floor with a deck between them located at five Admiral's Way, Wareham, Mass. This will appear on Wareham's Assessors Map Two, about seventy-three B and seventy-four A in the Onset Village Two zoning district.
Name and address for the record.
Is Joanne your sister?
No, don't know her.
All right, just wanted to make sure which Romano, you know, I don't know if I was dealing with Romano cheese or Romano the.
Ray Romano.
Hi, name and address for the record?
Ralph Romano, 294 Plymouth Street, Middleborough, Mass.
India Romano, 294 Plymouth Street, Middleborough, Mass.
All right, just can you brief us what you want to do?
What we would like to do is put an addition on the back of our house, five Admiral's Way. Right now, the back of the house has a, um, an unfinished old foundation. You have pictures of it in the, in your packet. It's an old eight inch, and it's cracked. What we would like to do is take that old concrete out and put, put new, a new foundation in, in the same footprint. And then from there, put a first floor addition on. It'll be about twenty-four by nine, the foundation and the first floor addition. The second floor, we would like to split the addition on each side. It'd be roughly five by six foot for a closet and a bathroom with a four-foot deck in between. So the second floor addition won't be as far out as the first. It's only nine feet off the back of the house, the first floor and the foundation.
Okay, so in the back of the house?
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna put a twenty-four, eight by nine feet addition, then the deck sixteen by seven?
Yep.
And you're gonna be all on the AE fourteen? Can I see one of the application?
Yes. See if I can.
All right, stop by Troy. Troy, what do you think?
I have no questions.
Put me in the world, where's Admiral's Way?
Um, third, uh, third right, as you go over the stone bridge headed east. Third right is Admiral's Way.
Okay.
Street before the church.
Yes.
Right, right by the church, is that?
Yep.
The street before it.
Just before it, yep.
There's the cameo, the girl that's got the sign on her multifamily that says cameo or something.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Right there, right after that, the next, the next street on the right. Okay, I don't know where it is. Okay, I get it. Admiral's Way.
All right, Chris, you have a question?
No, no questions right now.
Nope.
All right, according to the commissioner, it's an existing non-conforming, and if the board feels so, it's not so detrimental to the neighborhood, we could act upon it as a special permit under Section thirteen fifty-two, but it's thirteen fifty, which includes thirteen fifty-two of thirteen fifty-two.
Calling for.
Is the FAR, well, are they increasing the FAR, or it's an existing non-conforming?
It's increasing the FAR to almost a thirty percent.
Okay, where they are right now?
At twenty, twenty-one.
I'm gonna need a variance for that.
Mm-hmm.
And the side, and the rear setback?
The rear is fine, it's, it'd be the side setback.
The side, but you don't need to require var, if we feel it's not detrimental, we could do special permit, right?
Correct, yep.
All right. Okay, so we're gonna need a variance on the FAR to increase it by almost five percent, and the setback, like the commissioner said, if we feel not so, if we feel it's not such detriment, detriment to the neighborhood, we could act upon it as a special permit. We both go forward. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this matter?
In favor.
You need to come up and say your name and, and.
If you don't mind, you gotta come up just for the record.
Speak into the microphone.
Say your name, you're in favor, you're done.
My name's Maurice Carlin. I live at, uh, my cottage is across the street, four A. Have no problem with it. In fact, I think it'll be a benefit.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sorry for bringing you up.
Not a problem.
On record. Sir?
Eric Wade, three Admiral's Way, about the neighbor in front of him, and in favor.
In favor. Anyone against this matter? Okay, I see none.
There's also a letter, I believe this is a letter of support in our packet.
From who?
Murphy.
Kathy Murphy.
Can you read her address, Rich?
Twenty McBride, Bridge Street, twenty-nine McBride Street.
Okay, and she's in favor?
Yes.
All right, let the, I could show the letter from Kathy, what's her last name?
Murphy.
Kathy Murphy in favor of this part.
Mick Murphy, I think. Oh, Kathy M. Murphy.
See, they, and it's Kathy with a C, and it just says, do you like to?
So for the record, Kathy Murphy, twenty-nine, whatever street.
Looks like McBride.
Actually, it's, I think it's nine Admiral Street.
Yeah, Admiral.
What's that?
I think it's nine Admiral Street.
Nine Admiral Street, and she's in favor.
She's.
Letter was drafted September eighth, 2024.
She's the resident on the other side of us.
All right.
It's Admiral's Way, that's great.
Admiral's Way, sorry. All right.
He didn't teach courses when we went to school.
All right, board?
We're all very young.
Anything you want to add before we close, sir, ma'am?
No, I think that pretty much covers it.
Do you guys retiring in there? You want to move from Middleborough?
Exactly.
I want to retire there as soon as possible.
Much better by the water than.
Last year would be good.
All right, very well. That being said, let's move to close.
So moved.
So we have motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Myself, Nazi, aye. It's closed. On the variance, to increase it by five percent, how's the board feel?
Increase it by five or ten percent.
Five percent, right?
The FAR or?
Ten. It's like nine percent.
Well, as proposed, let's see, the FAR to be increased as proposed, so we don't, we're not tied up to. So can we have a motion increasing the FAR for variance?
So moved.
So we have a motion by Troy to increase the FAR as presented, and it meets statute requirement of Chapter forty-eight, Section ten, of a variance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Variance carries. On the, on the, on the addition on the setback, how does the board feel? Is it detrimental to the neighborhood or not detrimental?
None.
None.
Non-detrimental. Can I get a motion to act upon it as a special permit?
So moved.
Moved by Jim. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor to act on this matter as a special permit, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Carries. On the special permit, how's the board feel?
Motion to grant.
We have a motion to grant the special permit as presented. The finding is not detrimental to the neighborhood, and is to be built according to plans drawn by John Lawrence Libby on eight, seven, twenty-four on the surveyor, and the plan drafted by Robert DeRoche ASAP Engineering on August eighth, 2024. So you have to build it according to these plans, okay? If you modify them, you have to come back to.
Yes.
So on that motion, who seconded it?
Second.
Second. Who said, who made the motion?
I think I did.
Jim made the motion, second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It carries. Thank you. You're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Oh, my God, thank you. I love you all so much.
Was it worth sitting here all night just for that?
It was so worth it. I'll come back tomorrow. Thank you.
Come back tomorrow, but we won't be here.
All right.
Why? Huh? Ah. Uh, Belle? Yes. You're here for something? Belle, Bill.
I'm glad it's an office shop outside. You get tired and went home? He must have, because I don't see where he, because he didn't mention it to me.
For what?
It was, I think it was Danny, Danny Warren, something doing some parking down at fifty-nine.
Yeah, just come forward quick. I know what you're talking about. Do you want to come forward for the record?
It was other business.
All right. It's not on the agenda. We could discuss it. Just a name and address.
Under other business.
Okay. Bill Madden from GAF Engineering.
All right, so what, what is it?
I really don't know that much about it, other than he wanted to increase some, some occupancy, I think, due to parking, and.
Okay.
He was gonna be filling me in on some of the details. I didn't, I didn't have much to offer. I was offering him more support and be able to answer any of the detailed questions he may not be able to answer regarding his project.
Well, that, that's gonna need a, a, a public hearing, because it's not our permit to begin with. It's the planning board permit. How is our permit?
No, I have a planned one.
Yeah, it's a planning board permit. He needs a variant, that is us, but if it was our permit originally, we might accept a modification, but it's not, so he need a full site loan.
He was talking along the lines of minor modification, but I didn't know what the minor mod was.
We didn't grant, we didn't give that permit, so we cannot minor modify it if we didn't grant it.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
So he needs a public hearing with us, so makes his life easy, so you relay the message.
I think, I don't know who made the advice or what, but I think the, there were a lot of conversations about this through different people today, and I think advice was that he might want to get on the agenda for a variance, for a temporary variance, based on the town receiving a lease on a parking area, and then him receiving either a sublease or a license to use that. Gets that, then he'll, he won't even need it, he won't need anything, because then he'll, doesn't have enough parking places to, to increase his occupancy. I mean, it's in village district. I mean, it's somewhat of a walking district as well. I don't know what the situation is, how it pertains to the additional parking that we're talking about over there, the, the parking lot across from Bessie Park, but.
If he get a license to, to park there?
Yeah, from.
I guess he doesn't need us if he have enough parking, if the commission determines so, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't have enough details on this.
Yeah, that's the thing. We don't have deep.
I believe, I believe that it's within three hundred and fifty feet.
Of the front door, that, that's correct.
It is. Okay, and I believe that it's within three hundred and fifty feet of his front door, and he has document, proof documented.
Like a license or a lease or whatever.
So what, the situation right now is, is that the hospital had given him verbal agreements to either lease or purchase the location, and then changed their mind and decided that there might be a conflict there, then they were gonna grant the property, petition it and grant it to the town as a gift due to their nonprofit tax status. That turned out, the lawyers argued, to be not the correct process. So the current thinking is that the hospital will grant a lease to the town for one dollar a year to use it as municipal parking, and if and when that happens, the town can then license or sublease to Mr. Warren, and at that point, he'd have enough, enough parking to change his occupancy. But until the town has a lease, the town can't, 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 can't give him a license. Until the town has a lease from South Coast. Correct. But when the town does obtain that lease from South Coast, my understanding was it was gonna be open municipal parking. That's right, and if you read our bylaw, the open municipal parking, if it's shared parking, can be used in the formula. I didn't think that that was referring to municipal parking. I thought the shared parking was, was specifically related to private parties that owned parking that, that was not used. But then. But I thought, and I thought municipal parking was separate, similar to the parking lot down at Heinz Field. That's, that's a parking lot there that's open to the, open to the public, and, you know, the town, the town did. I think that's, I think that's why there's a need for the town to grant a license or a sublease, so that he does have, you know, controlled use of that parking. Well, it would be dedicated, I mean, some of, I don't know how they would work it out, but it would be dedicated to him. That's, that's what he really needs to focus on and pursue, you know, come in, do we need a variance, do we need a special permit? Do you need anything? Well, I mean, let's, let's go to El Mariachi, for example, just by way of example. You know, they got Pizzoli Square across the street, they have Merchant's Way behind it. All their parking, and they have on-street parking as well. They don't have an, an individual parking lot. So in, in my, in my view, just not necessarily related to fifty-nine, fifty-nine Main Street, open municipal parking is just that. It's open municipal parking for the use by the general public.
Can you use Bessie's Park parking?
I would say, I would say he could use Bessie Park, only because it is.
But I don't think it should count towards the occupancy, because anyone could park there. Sometimes I walk by there, and the lot's full with the fishermen.
Oh, you mean he wants something dedicated to?
Well, you're gonna have to be dedicated.
He needs to have control, he needs to have control of the spaces in order to use them to count towards his occupancy.
If it's municipal parking, obviously his customers can use it, but it's not gonna increase his occupancy.
So apparently he needs.
Okay, so that's, that's.
Okay, so that's, that's the whole issue.
That's just my thought, with, with a little bit of knowledge, I know what's going on.
Okay, so if he wants to increase his occupancy, that would necessarily mean that you would, he might need to have a license from somebody that grants him exclusive use of parking for the sole purpose of really occupancy of the building.
Right now, he owns sixty-something, sixty-seven parking spaces on his own property.
Forty-six.
Forty-six.
Forty-six, okay, all right, he owns the.
That's five hundred people, like hundred ninety, right?
No, it's four per.
Hundred ninety, yeah, that's a hundred ninety people.
It's four per.
Hundred ninety.
That, those patients.
How many he needs? How many people he could?
To be honest with you, I don't know what his occupancy is.
So bottom line, he needs, he needs to apply for a variance.
He needs to get like forty more spaces that he can, that he can say he has control over.
Is the, is the zoning board has the power to grant a variance, or this is a building code?
I don't know that it's.
Is a building code, fire marshal, what is it? Or can the board grant a variance?
The building, according to the building code, can hold much more than the current occupancy. So the current occupancy is based on the number of parking spots that he has control of.
That a building code or a zoning code?
That'd be zoning.
So the zoning.
So you could, you could grant him a variance.
Right, so he needs to apply for a variance. Unless in between, he gets a lease with, with, he says, South Coast?
South Coast, yeah.
South Coast or town, and I guess he's good, he doesn't need us.
Yeah, okay.
I think he kinda gets that now.
So you could, he would need, we would need to request a relief from the number of parking spaces required to get him to the occupancy that he was looking for for the building, is that?
I think you would have to reduce the ratio right now to one per five seats.
Yep.
He'd have to get a variance from the current.
Correct, yep.
He'd have to get a variance under the current.
Instead of one, instead of five seats, one car, maybe seven, whatever, I don't know how many occupants.
Yeah, okay.
How many occupy the, bottom line, needs a variance.
But if he gets.
And it's a public here.
If he gets control over the number of spaces he needs based on the, the formula in our bylaw, he doesn't, he just needs to bring proof of that to the commissioner, I believe, and then the commissioner can make a determination based on that. That sound, that sounds somewhat accurate to you, or? Somewhat, you know, yeah. We're not asking you to say, yeah, he gets it, we're just, we're pointing him in the right direction, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then timing, I guess timing must be an issue on, on his, on his end of things. I mean, obviously, there's not really a lot of time to advertise for a variance and hold the hearing and what have you between now and two or three weeks.
There's no, there's no, there's.
I can still get one for December.
You can?
Eleven?
Make it number seventeen.
I will vote for twenty-one, or number twenty-eight, if you wish, to make the December eleventh meeting.
But here's the, here's the, here's the iss, here's the issue. December eleventh, you could get him on the, you could get him on the menu.
And twenty days after.
It'll be the last hearing.
So, so on the eleventh, and then twenty days after that is what, so eleven plus twenty is thirty-one.
I don't have to wait twenty more days.
Seventeen days to stamp, but.
So that's, that's, you know, that puts us into twenty twenty-six, and so as far as Christmas parties in twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five. As far as any, as far as anything between now and the first of the year.
Yeah, no, it's, there's just not.
There's just, it's just not.
Not enough time.
Calendar possible.
I can't wait for the planning board for parking update anyway.
I, you know, I wasn't, I haven't been, I haven't been part of it, so it's difficult for me to really even grasp.
Just open with hundred ninety-some people, that's a lot of business.
Yeah, but you, at least we'll be able to have a New Year's Eve party if you come to December eleventh.
Yeah, I think, I'll, I'll go over with him tomorrow, and we'll figure it out what.
But if you come in tomorrow with an application, I can get a win.
I think he could have a New Year's Eve party right now with a hundred and ninety or less people. I think he's okay with that, but the problem is, at a hundred and ninety people with a seven million dollar building, it would cost him more money to put the party on than the party could draw. He would make more money, he would make more money closing the building, locking the doors, and taking a business write-off against other holdings. The building will make him more money with the doors locked and closed than it will license for a hundred and ninety people. That's my, that's my experience with his business.
Well, double charge.
Right. Yeah, exactly. All right, well, I'll see what I can do.
Tomorrow will be a last day, except on the topic.
Okay, I, I know I have an eleven o'clock meeting, it's gonna take a couple hours, so I'll have to.
I can make it happen.
Okay.
That's a variance.
All right. Well, we'll see, we'll see where it takes us, that's all we can do.
For record.
All right.
Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Very welcome.
Thanks.
Phil, do you have anything?
Yes, sir, okay.
Very well.
Microphone, if you'd like.
Uh, Billy?
Come on.
Before you go.
Just been talking the whole time.
Indian neck, make sure.
Never worn it from you.
Did they do fifty G, Indian neck, or did they did the fifty G?
Indian neck, yeah, they're all, they're all.
So remember, they need.
They were informed of that.
Inspection, periodic inspection.
That's one, that's what I spoke to them about today.
There were two, that took six weeks to establish.
Or we'll have a problem on the.
That's why I always say, like, please wait.
Thanks, you're welcome.
For my.
Good job, and those plans came out nice.
Thanks.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Jim.
Bushman wants a copy of this decision.
All in favor, say aye.
Fourteen day.
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I mean, he was preliminary business, he doesn't need a decision.
Aye, motion. Troy? And myself, Nazir, aye.
He doesn't get a decision, he was preliminary business.
Thank you, guys.